Yeah, a few time hours ago. Of course, you probably have to take way to run after you had an iron, on an iron rail. Yep, strategize.
I want to talk this year.
Do you have my admiration?
We don't have a word to say.
Call this regular meeting is the work call roll.
Mayor Querem, Councilmember Swanson.
Here.
Mabry.
Here.
Fabia.
Here.
Newman.
Here.
Please stand and join us in questioning.
Good leading to the flag of the United States of America, and to your government, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public comments tonight? Okay, we'll go to the approval of minutes to Commissioner Newman.
Thank you, Mayor. I will make a motion that we approve the minutes from our regular council meeting at April 1st, 2019.
Motion's been seconded.
Comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mabry.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye. And then we'll go to approval invoices, decision process.
In the Department of Accounts and Finances, for this period, we have invoices totaling $152,306.86. In the Department of Streets and Public Improvements, we have invoices totaling $71,679.93. In the Department of Public Safety, we have invoices totaling $122,716.97. And at the Department of Public Property and Utilities, we have invoices totaling $671,844.40. Mayor, all council members present have confirmed their reviews of all invoices, and now are submitted for disposition.
Motion that we approve the invoices as presented.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Any comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mabry.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye. And then we'll go to approval invoices, decision process.
In the Department of Accounts and Finances, for this period, we have invoices totaling $152,306.86. In the Department of Streets and Public Improvements, we have invoices totaling $71,679.93. In the Department of Public Safety, we have invoices totaling $122,716.97. And at the Department of Public Property and Utilities, we have invoices totaling $671,844.40. Mayor, all council members present have confirmed their reviews of all invoices, and now are submitted for disposition.
Motion that we approve the invoices as presented.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Any comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mabry.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye. Now we'll go to regular business, and to start, we're going to be moving item number nine up to the first business we've done today.
Okay, we're going to look at Resolution R-19-019. This is a resolution authorizing an agreement with, for an artist installation at the Mary Utah Memorial Walkway. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this resolution and it's submitted for disposition.
Motion that we approve Resolution R-19-019.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. We've got Rick Brooks here with us tonight. Would you like to give a presentation?
Well, thank you for being here. I am one of the commissioners of the Public Arts Commission, and Cindy Olson's the chair. She had to be out of town tonight, but I wanted to describe a little bit about one of our projects during the past year. The Mary Utah Walkway, you may know, is between Fawcett's Pharmacy and the quilting shop on South Hofstown Main Street. And I brought some pictures, just so you can hand down, shows you what it looks, the walkway looks like now. As you may recall, it was the location for the O.B. Schaefer sculpture that's now in front of the public library. What we found is, we're looking for ways that we can engage members of the public in being stakeholders in public arts projects. And one way we found we can do it is, is to do it through projects where they can make something with other people. And this project's kind of a neat one because it takes a location that had some meaning to the city of Princeton, and people who lived here a long time ago. It's in a, what's now kind of an alleyway that's been abandoned, and we want to turn it into a place that, we'll sort of call it, a walkway of memories, pieces from the past into the future. And it came from an idea that Jill Murphy had at Hoffman's Patterns of the Past, where he takes pieces of broken china, which really, people send them to them from all over the world, they're really memories of their families in the past. And we're going to ask them to contribute pieces of their own heirloom china that will be part of a mosaic, or group of mosaics. Centrepiece of this project, as you're looking at it, is a big, we call it a bench or a sofa. It's made of a mosaic like this. And you can see an example, we've been experimenting with an artist who's done many, many mosaics and thought about mosaic making in Ottawa. But you can see there are sort of family eruzes in this piece of the mosaic. And if you imagine the idea of a large mosaic covered bench or sofa, the idea is that it would be a place where people would go to have their picture taken, to make memories, as well as bring and share their family memories. And kind of like Red Covered Bridge, or other places where you go for your prom pictures or wedding, you can imagine going and having a picture taken. The unique part is that we're now working on a way, if you donate part of your family china to this, we will take notes from you, enter it into a database and a map, so you can find the piece that you donated in the mosaic. And maybe you bring your grandchildren here, and you say, well, you know, my grandmother gave that piece of china to be, so that it could be part of a memorial for this place. So it's placemaking at its best, we think. Some of the pictures that you've got, they show that there are other cities who've done this kind of thing in the past. We know of none who've used this technique, mosaics in particular, where we'll have two workdays where we teach people to make their own pieces and tiles, and then be part of it. Not only have the large bench mosaic, we have two chairs and a table that we start out with, and other ways that we can incorporate mosaics that people make, that are supervised by, the artist on this one is from Susan Burton, from Ottawa, as I say. So that's the gist of it. It's a wonderful way to get started. We have some other projects we're doing that, I don't know whether I include in there, and there may be some samples of bicycle racks. Just wanted you to know that we're talking to the other commissions, working together to see if we can unify our efforts. We're giving thoughts to designing bike racks that the city would, I think people will get behind, businesses and nonprofit groups in town. But we want you to know that we're listening and talking, we want ideas from you. Most of, the beauty of this project is that it is not using taxpayer money, as far as we know, for the Utah Memorial Walkway, and we will be doing fundraising, both here in the city, but also from people who've been customers of Hoffman's Patterns of the Past.
And this will include broken china from Hoffman's as well?
You bet. They're contributing quite a bit.
Contributing to the act.
Well, yeah, they've got plenty. Act statement, my adolescence comes back to me, I love that place, we can create a little of it ourselves. But I think we want to hold off on that one. But in any case, that's the idea, yeah.
Rick, I've got a couple of quick questions. You said no taxpayer money, so how is this funded?
It's the money, I think, that's coming from the city is through tourism, right? Isn't it the tourism?
So, in a way, that's taxpayer's money that we're pulling from our pillow taxes, right?
Right.
But it's not necessarily coming from the, I mean, these are questions that you can answer, but I, the point is, we're going to raise private funds and get in-kind contributions as well.
Here's a grant that I know Chris is applying for as well.
And I will say, I'm applying for two grants, one of which is a grant from the AARP, believe it or not. They call them quick challenge grants. So we have several fundraising things in the works now. And one of the things we've found in other projects is people want to be the first. And it'd be nice, we're considering giving you the right to have a little charter number and be the first person to have your wedding or prom pictures at the Memorial Walkway. You know, if you could come up with a name, the throne, or something like that. It's something that people can build their own memories with.
Another quick question. So, we know this is going to be sitting outside in the weather, and 12 months out of the year?
Yep.
Okay. So, how, describe how these things stay on, whatever, they've built a structure, and then these are, like?
Yeah, that's why we brought this. There's all kinds of, well, you can see examples in Ottawa that have been, some have been around 10, 15 years.
Some of her work?
Yeah. Yeah, and it's well-tested, she's trained people all over the Midwest, but what's nice about it is, it's a combination of, you can see, there's a part here where it's, it's got a, kind of a, what do you call it? A sandwich of, yeah. And so there's a hard backing, there's different kinds of glue, there's a webbing that keeps it on. I think, you know, obviously, we're not going to have this kind of thing that you'd sit on, but there's a way to make it soft and smooth and non-risky to everybody. So there's real good examples of this holding up in the weather. The other part of the walkway is that we intend to cover it with sails, sort of triangular shape of, like banners, but it gives the impression of being a roof, it gives shade to the walkway. There'll be four posts like flagpoles that you can run the sails up, and it's like some of the pictures that you've seen there. It gives the appearance of having a roof, but it doesn't, it's just cloth. And they're nice and colorful when they attract some attention that way.
When is it anticipated she'll be done?
Well, the goal is to have it ready for Homestead. And so we've got two community workdays, and we want to have it done before September, so we're not getting all nervous towards the end. But we want people to be able to see it and go there and be there, and because they're there for Homestead, this is all about capitalizing on, frankly, one of the most important events in Princeton, draws more people in, it's Homestead. So we want to have an exhibit that goes along with this, talk about some of Princeton's history, and why it's valuable to come back and see and be a part of something like this.
I think some of the talk was having the dedication of it on Sunday, or Monday.
Yep. That also is an opportunity to do some fundraising. And I often don't describe it as fundraising, really what we're giving people is a chance to be involved in something that they value. And not so much you ask them just for some money, you're asking for them to take part and be a stakeholder, and they can tell people they know their family's about it.
If I could ask a question. So, I know I'm trying to, you know, sell this idea, and I'm trying to get sold on myself plan, I'm not sure if I'm there yet, but if, I'd like to go to Ottawa and take a look at the finished product, I didn't get a chance to do that over the weekend, but if this was delayed until the first meeting in May, we might have two new council members, or one new council member, maybe even. The point would be, is, would that throw off your schedule, if we were able to have a little time here to investigate this? And I'd like to get some public feedback that, about spending $15,000, even though, I know you said, in a way, it's not taxpayer money, but it is, it is money from our pillow fund that we could be using for, we've used it for the trolley, things like that in the past, right?
Yeah, and they're requesting $10,000, and so they signed tracks for 15, but our commission is going to raise the other $10,000.
Yeah, we're going to raise the other $10,000, so it's not 15.
And I think the 14.5 is in the ordinance, is for the agreement for the artist, that's why the artist, that's why the 14.5, but the tourism money, and it's the tourism money that would be used as what we withhold, you know, on the city side, those $10,000 is coming up with that portion.
And part of that, too, the other portion, will be for the poles north of the tracks that we discussed with budget planning session.
Well, there's no doubt it needs something, we've neglected that, the brickwork's looking pretty tough there on that wall, and things like that, so I know that.
Well, I mean, the idea of seeing what she's done in Ottawa's a good idea, and we would like public involvement. We haven't really promoted this at all, we wanted to come to you all and talk to you and hear what your thoughts are.
So, going like, raising mentions, suggesting going to the first meeting in May, wouldn't be a, wouldn't be a hindrance, or would it be a hindrance?
It would be problematic, we have to, we've signed the contract. I mean, we want to sign that and get to work on planning the events and so on. We won't hear from grants that we're proposing for, for some time, to start fundraising, will take a while. What we want to do is get that moving. So I'm happy to, you know, I think we want to get public participation in, I'd be glad to go with you to Ottawa and talk to you about it. I think it's, what's nice about it is, we've looked at a lot of examples of this kind of work, and what other cities have done. And it looks like it has the appeal, that would make sense. And I understand some of the challenges with using tourism funds for an actual project, but this has one that I think has staying power and will attract people. And frankly, without being too gushy about it, Hoffman's is one of the city's strongest assets. And Jill wanted to honor her family with the bench, and we've sort of figured out, how can we integrate these kinds of things into the, you know, how we keep the loyalty and devotion to that store, which people know from all over the world, and also get people involved in a new way? So that's the thought behind it.
Well, I have faith that you guys and the commission have thought this through, you know the artists, you feel strongly about the project, and you seem to think that it's well worth it, and something we should move forward with. That's really all that I need.
Well, I think our goal is to establish projects that also make it easier for everybody who's a stakeholder to understand what everybody's role is, and how we can work together. And this is kind of a first relatively big project, we think it has long-term potential, and we have some other smaller things that we're going to be doing. It's just a piece of making sure that people know what the Public Arts Commission does, and what it plans to do. So, anyway, if you have any other questions, I'm glad to answer them. And if we could establish a good way for us to introduce projects to you and to others, this is a good way for us to begin. We want to see how we do it in a way that makes everybody happy.
Yeah, I know there's been a lot of interest in that walkway, and I think Ray mentioned that it's been neglected for a long, long time, and it's a, it's just very, very bland. And I think, you know, I like the project personally, it's still enviable.
Well, in an effort to keep it moving, I'd be glad to support it, I don't want to be the lone person here that's dragging us down, but I just, you know, we're fighting a lot of things in our budget, and again, it is taxpayer dollar, once it comes in as a pillow tax, that's how we decide how to spend it, so, okay, I'll be supportive of that.
Well, and either you, you know, don't break your teacups, but bring some in, and we'll put it on the bench.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Any other comments, or comments up here?
I'll read this here, and come pick it up tomorrow.
The motion has been seconded, so call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mabry.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is ordinance O-19-003. This is the annual budget for the fiscal year, ending May 1, 2019, and ending on April 30, 2020.
We're going to have a special meeting later in April to approve the final one, decide a few changes to make.
I move to table this.
April 1, next.
I table it, so special meeting on April.
We're going to finalize it, I move to retable this, approve of this ordinance until our, for our special meeting, April 1.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mabry.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is ordinance O-19-004. This is the second and final reading for an ordinance amending the boundaries of the Philpottum Enterprise Zone. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance, and it is submitted for disposition.
Motion that we approve ordinance O-19-004, this is the second and final reading.
Second.
Motion's been seconded, any comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mabry.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is ordinance number O-19-005. This is the first reading of an ordinance establishing city manager purchase authority. So Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance, and it is submitted for disposition.
Motion that we advance ordinance O-19-005 to the second reading.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Rachel?
So recently, Justin has been looking for a truck for the cemetery department, but a lot of times when we sign them on the auction website, the bid is like due the next day, by this time, and so the last one we found would have been really good, and we thought, you know, we probably could have got it for about $30,000, but the authority I have is only $20,000, so we lost that one, and the person that got it had it for just over $20, so it would have been a really good truck, so we thought, giving us this authority, so when the time went again, we can bid up to $4,000 would be helpful.
Any other comments, questions? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mabry.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is Resolution R-19-20. This is a resolution authorizing an agreement for audit services from Whipfly LLP of Sterling, Illinois. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this resolution, and it is submitted for disposition.
Motion that we approve ordinance R-19-020.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Rachel?
So we recently did an RFP for audit services, because the current auditors that we had, we've been with them for seven years, so we received two proposals back, and we are recommending to go with Whipfly, I guess that's what they said, as our auditors for the next three years. We looked at a lot of things, including, you know, other government organizations that they do audits for, as well as costs, and we feel that they will do a good job for us, so we are recommending going with them.
Any other questions, comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mabry.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is Resolution R-19-021. This is a resolution accepting and awarding the low bid for loaning certain city properties. Mayor, all city, or all council members have reviewed this resolution, and it is submitted for disposition.
Motion that we approve Resolution R-19-021.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mabry.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye. I'll go to city manager report.
First, Jeff Mankert from our electric department is here, and he's just going to do a brief update on the engine overhaul that was recently completed, the generation plant.
Yeah, like Rachel said, the good news is, the engine is back in service. We didn't quite meet our deadline, but we did meet the deadline taking the engine out of service. It had to be back in by May 15th, we were shooting for April 1st, we did it on April 4th. So we were close. We would have made it, except we had two attempts towards the end of March, and they did not go so well. Each time, we had a main bearing fail. So that takes about a week, by the time you get those out, get new ones in, and get everything lined up again. As far as bottom line cost, we're not quite there yet, but at this point, we're probably going to run maybe about $250,000 more than what we had expected, and there was basically three main reasons why. We had to get all liners recrooned, which we weren't expecting, it was about $112,000, just to have those liners recrooned. The aftercoolers, we thought we could get by with just getting those cleaned, turns out we couldn't, we had to get them recorked, so that was about $61,000. And then we had five cracked heads, which, we're surprised the engine was running as well as it was with those cracked heads, that was about $32,000. So, you know, there's $200,000 of that overage right there. Plus, there's a few other things, a little on the minor side, but, so as I said, we're probably going to end up about $250,000 over what we had money allocated for. But a couple reasons why we need to keep up with these engines. I just got a phone call today from Ameri, that in early May, they want us off the tie line for 36 hours straight. So, it's one good reason to keep these engines in good working order. With only one tie line, they want to shut it down, you know, without those generators, we wouldn't have any power. And the other thing we got to keep in mind, too, is, by contract with the IMA, we get credits of about $1.5 million every year, and that goes strictly to regularly here in the city. So, and I know that, you know, there was talk at some point in the past about another tie-in coming into the city, from, I think, from maybe over east. Towards Peru, yeah. But the cost of, the cost is incredibly high. Yeah, plus, unless we went ahead and paid for it ourselves, Ameri's not going to do it until our load grows significantly. And nowadays, you probably figure, I think they're figuring close to $2 million a mile to put, even just an overhead line in. So.
$2 million a mile?
About, yeah. Kind of what engineers say nowadays.
So how much life have we put into the engine, Jeff? What's this going to do for us?
Well, that engine was put in in the 60s, this is the first major overhaul, so I would expect another 40 to 50 years of engine life, providing EPA doesn't shut us down first.
So the next, we have another engine that's scheduled for an overhaul as well at some point in our timeline on that.
Well, we would like to start on it soon, but, you know, money is always an issue. You know, we got to figure out a way to pay for this one during the next few years. But yeah, we got number eight, our biggest engine over there, is the next one on slate. Hopefully with, you know, in roughly four to five years, we can make that happen.
Then it'll probably run a lot more expensive.
Than this one, yeah, yeah. But now, the good thing about that is, if you remember a couple of years ago, when we bought that engine down in Florida, a lot of those parts that, or those parts that we bought were for that engine.
Forgotten about that, yeah, that's right.
So hopefully, that would help immensely.
Would you also be able to do it a lot in-house?
Well, as a matter of fact, we did a lot more this time in-house, and I don't have a final number on the last time we did overhaul, which was number three, three and four identical engines, but just kind of looking at some of the hours that were worked back then, we did much more in-house this time, and putting a rough number on it, I think we probably saved about $100,000.
And you'll still be able to do the in-house for eight?
Absolutely. Yeah, we try and do as much in-house. I mean, it's good for the guys to do that, because then they know that engine intimately, you know, they know every, nothing wrong on that thing.
Anything else?
Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks for your time, appreciate it.
The other item I have is the monthly financial report, so this is through March, so there's one month left in the fiscal year. Nothing I'm going to really point out, everything's about 95, 96, 97% revenue or expense spent, so we have one more month left to go, like I said. Nothing over budget yet. I'll note that the sales tax through March is higher than the prior five years. Hotel tax, I'm not going to mention that yet, because there is one error reporting this, there is one hotel missing the last couple of months, so that'll be updated next month. And, go to the activity report really quick, so when you look at the activity for March, you have received 2,800 calls, our fire department had 186, and our police department responded to 554 calls for the month of March. The only other item I have is that the annual citywide cleanup is going to be, start the week of Monday, May 6th, for all residents east of Main Street, and Monday, May 13th, for all residents west of Main Street. And there's a list of some items that cannot be taken, and those are on our website, or Facebook page.
Okay. I've just got a couple of items. First of all, entertaining the appointment of the board of trustees of firefighters. And. Motion that we reappoint the board of trustees of the firefighter's pension fund, Brian Berlin, for a three-year term ending April 30th, 2022.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Motion's been seconded. Any comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson?
Aye.
Mabry?
Aye.
Fabia?
Aye.
Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Querom?
Aye.
One other item, tonight is Commissioner Tomore Fabia's last, last regular season, or regular season, regular, kind of like business council meeting. And I just wanted to thank you for your, for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then tomorrow, as everybody knows, between Commissioner Newman and Rhonda Swift, that will be decided tomorrow at Bureau County Courthouse at 1 PM. And then we'll be also welcoming in our next regular business, regular meeting in May, Hector Gomez to the, to the city council. That is all I have on my business. Do we have any old business? Have any new business?
Mayor, if I could, just one question. I know the Chamber's been working real hard on getting a permanent, well, a, a collectible stage for their summer concerts. Maybe we can get a report on how they're doing that, because that's such a worthy project. That if I, if we can try to put some tourism money towards that, I think that's, that's a worthy cause. And so, and I realize we're trying to try to make tourism dollars work for things, but I think we should be assisting them as much as possible. That's bringing in a couple thousand people every concert, and those poor volunteers have to set up the old stage, and then when they go home, they're still there taking out the old stage, so.
I, you know, I sit on that committee, and, you know, we've talked about that, the tying with tourism. Obviously, it's a tourism event. In the stage, you know, what we have now, and it's been, it's provided to us by the Bureau County Fair Board, and we're extremely thankful for them for the use of their stage in the past, you know, three years. It's been a godsend, and they've done a lot of work to that stage for us, and I really appreciate what they've done. And the new stage, what they're, what we've been looking at is, you know, we've had some concerts, we have a little bit of mist and, or a hot sun, and we want a canopy, a stage with a canopy. And we're looking at used, and we're doing this fundraising effort right now to come up with the money to do that. What's amazing is that, and there's some stages out there that are within our target, which was like about $15,000 is what they want to go for. You know, unfortunately, to set these things up, it's, it's, it was really an eye-opener. You just don't roll it up. I mean, it is, I, I, we closed Main Street down, I think, at 3 o'clock to roll this stage, and I think we'd have to close Main Street down at 9 o'clock to set these stages up. I mean, they're very involved, so, you know, that's, it's, we've talked about that, using some tourism money in that. If that doesn't kick off possibly, I mean, we're doing the fundraising, and we're going to continue with the fundraising, so definitely on the radar. So appreciate that. Any other new business? Public comments? You know, entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene at our next special meeting.
Move that we adjourn our regular meeting this evening and reconvene for our next council meeting on Monday, May 6th, 2019, 7 o'clock at City Hall.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. We've got a special, on Monday, sorry, on April 29th. All right, let's, let's start over.
Start over.
Let's move to adjourn our regular meeting tonight and reconvene to our special meeting on Monday, so, April 29th, at 6 PM, Rachel, is that right? At City Hall.
Motion's been seconded. Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson?
Aye.
Mabry?
Aye.
Fabia?
Aye.
Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Querom?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned, and thank you all for attending.